Good evening, everyone, and we'd like to welcome everybody to this final installment of our budget presentations. If you would please, well, let me just call your board order.
You called your board order.
Okay.
I called the Board of Finance in order, February 10.
Please rise, you're simply. Flags are right up here in front. My position is to define the United States of America and to be remunerated for what it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our first person up before we get to the board of that will be planning committee department 250, which is a welcome town planner. That's the bag, yeah. That's thank you and welcome. Thank you. No, that's just for the recording, so.
Oh, you just.
Just set that on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sorry to interrupt.
All right, so if you guys can carry.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'm here tonight to recite the Declaration of Independence. Um, basically, I'm here just to answer any questions tonight have this evening. My budget has been pretty flat for the last four or five years. Um, the only thing I want to mention to all of you is that during the time of COVID, I never ever would have expected the amount of development, work permits, people doing things to their homes that because they were at home, they had the time to do it. Never ever would I have ever expected being an president and work in our particular area of town hall. Um, the only thing I want to mention is that we wouldn't have been able to do it unless we had the staff that we have. And my staff is top notch. A lot of the other departments in our wing are the same thing. As a department head, I'm nobody without the staff that I have for me at the point. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Best presentation of the week.
Which my rest, my meetings might like that.
I don't have any questions. Beth, you, you do a great job, and your staff is top notch. And your commission does a great job too, so thank you very much for that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Department 452, Board of Education, welcome. Mr. Glenn Harper.
Good luck.
Chairwoman Melanie O'Brien and. Would you move the episode?
Yeah.
Thank you and welcome.
Can I just tell the words on this table? So on your table this evening is, is a revised, it's a Board of Education budget by object code. So we went from the superintendent budget to the Board of Education budget, and there's also a summary page. This is what this conference was like, right? Am I a host?
Oh, yeah, I'm just a host. Recording. Y'all. All right, tell me again. Just give me a time for. I think I did.
Let's start at the federal state.
Okay. I see not as often read. I believe we are ready. Welcome, I would just like to. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Let me know if you can. Do some jumping jacks back there, okay? All right. I just want to first thank Mr. Mickerbocker and his board, and this is hoping to help support for the opportunity to present the 2022-23 project budget. I want to tell you a little bit about the process to getting here. A few weeks back, Dr. Harper presented the superintendent's budget. After which time, we had a number of workshops and the education net, the through scrutinized line by line, the budget that was presented, we asked a lot of questions and go into the public, which we did actually have a public for the financial workshops. After which time, we voted on our budget. We had the opportunity at that point to make additions or subtractions depending on new information that came up during that process. We did vote unanimously. There was one absent board member, but otherwise it was an eight member due and scope for our Board of Education budget, which we're presenting to tonight. So I just want to start there. And. I'll start. Okay, all right. So first of all, our mission, which drives us, is to foster a culture of excellence and achievement accomplished through strong collaborative relationships and rigorous teaching and earning opportunities for all of you. Our graduates will be compassionate, skilled, inquisitive individuals who will take initiative and make positive contributions to society. So if we don't graduate our kids being college and career ready and with life skills to succeed, then what are we here for? So that's what we're all about, and that's a big, a big job, a lot of elements to that. I'm going to talk about the two major challenges that impact this budget, this budget year. Not surprisingly, with the pandemic, and that impacts us in a number of ways, whether you call it learning loss, lost opportunities. Our kids generally are maybe not ready to otherwise be but for the pandemic, the isolation, the Zoom meetings, the hybrid in and out, and the disruptions, and not only to their academic lives, but to their social lives, to their interaction with others, to their loves and organizations they belong to, to the things they would other than participate in. So that's a big piece that we have to address. And the other piece is increasing enrollment, and I'm going to look, Dr. Harper speaks specifically about subgroups, but generally, there has been a trend in that where our enrollment is increasing. I think it lasts now 3,000, 90.
3,209.
Yeah, 209, okay. So even since October 1, when the state takes a number from us, an appreciable number of additional students. So these students are coming in throughout the year at all different levels. So, Dr. Harper. Okay, and so what are we concerned about as a board? Not surprisingly, academic needs. We really need to make sure our kids are getting what they need, and we are demanding of our kids, of our curriculum, of our staff. And so certainly the academic needs. Also, the mental health, the social and emotional piece. Kids aren't going to succeed in school if they don't feel safe, if they don't feel supported. So it's really important that they, that they don't feel anxious, that they are not depressed, that they don't have thoughts of hurting themselves or others. So absolutely a concern of ours as a district. And increased enrollment numbers relative to our resources, an absolute concern. And not only more numbers, but children with more intense needs. So, and kids with more intensive, cost more to educate because they need more resources, they need more features, they need more supports. Sure, absolutely. So, you know, just to add on to what Ms. O'Brien is saying, can you all hear me too? Okay, thank you. You know, we don't know yet how long it's going to take us to get out of the pandemic. And, and I'm not talking about the physical health of our children. What I'm really addressing is the academic needs that they have as a result of the pandemic and the mental health needs as a result of the pandemic. We did our presentation very differently this year because we've had so many presentations along the way. And, you know, I know a bunch of you participated in a lot of our workshops and the one that we did in December. So in terms of like the data that we typically show, we're more going to talk about it more broadly, but we have copies of all the handouts of the previous presentations, so that if you really want more depth in, in some of that data, you can look at those presentations to garner more of it. But to get, just to highlight a couple of data points that, to build off what Ms. O'Brien said in terms of this academic. I don't like to use the term learning loss because it implies a deficit model. And we like to refer to this unfinished learning. And to Ms. O'Brien's point, it wasn't just the fact that because of COVID, kids were virtual, even when we had them in the classroom, can we take pride in the district because we were in school most of that time? Even when they were in classroom, teachers could not teach in the same manner that they used to teach. They couldn't pull small groups, they couldn't work one-on-one with kids. And so we received some pretty significant gaps. You know, just to give you a sense, we give the NWA every year, and we, pre-COVID, in literacy, our students were at 60, we had 60% of our students that were above the 61th percentile, which is above the average range. After COVID, they're at 51%. It's pretty significant. In mathematics, it was 54%, after COVID, it's 43%. We anticipate that it's going to take years to recover that. Because, and in the mental health arena, and I know I shared the statistics at a previous meeting, but just to give you a sense of what we're dealing with, pre-COVID, we were concerned about our social emotional wellbeing of our students. And I shared with you at the time that we did survey, developmental asset survey of our students. And I think it was 24 or 25% of our students at that time, pre-COVID, reported severe depression. And 10% of those surveyed, grades eight through 12, said that they attempted their life at some one point. 10%. Since the beginning of this school year, we have amazing mental health staff, amazing, we have passionate, energetic people. We have had 55 crisis interventions in our school. 55. Those children, we only do crisis intervention if they are attempting to harm themselves. We also have 524 students that are receiving regular counseling in the schools just from our staff. That does not include our school-based health center, referrals to outside agencies. That's just what our staff is serving our kids. And we have 1,200 kids that receive counseling in the month of January. 1,200. So when I say there's significant need, I'm not exaggerating it. You know, and I, there's a lot of reasons why we think that might have happened, but we can talk about that. But I just want to kind of punch home some points that, you know, I think this year more than ever, the, the needs of our school district, the pandemic and the enrollment, which we'll get into, is so significant. Right? And then also increases in, in the number of students identified with disabilities. Again, needing more supports, more resources, the sheer numbers of those kids and being able to serve their needs. And the rising costs of material services and goods, which are going to be a challenge for all of us. On a personal level, I'm concerned about, as my, in my role as board chair, informing you, informing our constituents, our parents, that we have these needs, that this is my job. This is my job to relieve this to, to be transparent, to know the needs of, tell you that we, last year, when we talked to you, we also were speaking of rising enrollment and greater needs for our kids, and we use the term, we're at a crossroads. Last, this year, we're at breaking point. We're at a point where we just have too many kids with too many needs to take care of them, and we're reaching that point. We're, it's, it's now going to start to be a struggle as these numbers increase. And then priorities of the 2022-2023 education budget, not surprisingly, our budget mirrors these challenges that we have. So maintaining our current curricular and extracurricular programs is a priority. Maximizing resources to support fiscal efficiency, how do we do that? We move programs, we share transportation, we share staff, we put it among schools, you know, all the things we could possibly can just stretch our resources throughout 3,209 kids and their needs. Also, just what the needs of students with disabilities and decreasing enrollment they have. And not, last but not least, certainly to support the social emotional needs of children as a result of the pandemic. So those are our priorities for this budget. And I just want to add, you know, I said this to the board of that, I probably would have needed to ask for more in this budget, to be honest with you. The reason I think we're able to manage to a full level that we are is that because of the federal grants that we received as a school district, and we're going to talk about that later in the presentation. But if we did not have those grants, it probably would have been a much more significant that ask in terms of meeting the needs of our students. But Parker, don't ask me to pause, this might be a nice time. She wanted that pause to see if there's questions thus far.
Yeah, going as a board. I do have a question. You said that pre-COVID, 24% of students, but whoa, you didn't say post-COVID.
We haven't done the post-COVID survey. We are planning to re-administer it in April or May, Dr. Spence. Here somewhere, I believe that's, that's when we're going to re-administer it.
Okay.
Is that the?
I'm sure it's higher, I just wanted.
Yeah, correct. Yes, Brian?
Just mentioned the federal funds. When we go through the budget, are there any numbers in here in last year's budget represented that are currently being supported with federal funds? Like in terms of salaries?
No.
And there's no positions or anything outside of this budget that's to be taken with the federal funds or the co-funds right now?
Oh, yes, there's a tremendous amount.
So they're not, but they're not shown?
They're not showing, they're not showing in the operating budget.
We'll give us those numbers later.
We can, and Cynthia asked me to put it, and I put a detailed analysis on our website. We created a financial dashboard, and on that financial dashboard, there's pretty much by line, all the ways that we're spending that money. So Brian, to your point, though, to your point, we are funding things to deal with our unfinished learning through those grants. So for example, math interventionists, or SEL coach, tutors, special ed teacher, all of those are being funded to the grant to specifically work with us as academic leads. And, but they don't, are reflected in this budget. In terms of staffing?
In terms of debt loss.
Oh. You, you have a slide on that later.
I do.
The total value of the grant.
I do.
Is later on, but if you go on our website, onto the district dashboard, there were four main grants that pertained to the pandemic money that came down. And there's a line, line by line explanation of how it's been set.
Yeah, I'm going to send you that link.
And what, last question, what sort of plan was the staff that we have that was hired to grant on the grant?
They, when they were hired, they were told that it was funded, being funded by a grant position. And, and so that they know that it will be eventually expired. I'm hoping that, that, that the state through the federal government can get an extension. So right now, the grants are, we, we put the grants, the ones that were salary positions, we put them into the three-year grant. So that we knew we had three years for these people. And we're hoping that they might extend it out even longer. I'm not positive that's going to happen, but that would be the best scenario so that we could maintain a smaller. Two, it's two full-time people? I can tell you, three, three full-time people, a special ed teacher, a math interventionist, and SEL coach. And two math, two math, sorry, two math interventionists. All right, and Will School Johnson. And SEL for special, and special ed teacher, and then there's tutors.
Math tutors, reading tutors, EL tutors, two of each.
And those are. Those are part of this, and we'll get back to it more when we get to the grants. Okay. Any other questions right now or should we move on? Okay, thank you. All right, and then the budget drivers, not surprisingly, contractual obligations. As Ms. Beyonce likes to say, we're in the people business. So our contractual obligations, health insurance, special education costs, including an additional special education teacher, our bus contract, and policy lines that were unchanged from the reductions that were made in 2021, 2022. Just so you know, when, when the principals presented their budgets to us in, in our process internally, we had them keep the budget, especially the non-payroll items, to the amount that they were cut last time. So they wanted more, but we kept it at that level. So, I think it's my. Yeah, so I'll talk a little bit about enrollment. As Melanie said, our enrollment has just slowed, and it seems like every day, we have new families registering in our school system. Right now, as, as of this PowerPoint, this is the beginning of February, we had 3,209 students. That's the first time we've been over 3,200, and I believe it's the first time it's been since 2000. I believe 2006, right? So it's significantly increased, even since I did my presentation. We had, well, I'm sorry, we have an increase of 112 students from last year. And even since October 1st, we have 35 more students that have joined the schools. So the, the enrollment is ongoing and it has been ongoing. One of the things I tried to emphasize in the previous presentation, it's really not static. I think most people think our October 1st number is our number throughout the year, but really it's not. And we keep getting more and more students throughout the year. You know, Melanie briefly talked about special education, and this year in the budget, you're going to see a lot of adjustments in our special education lines. And I want to explain why. So when I started here in February, we had 332 special ed students, and I started in 2014. So it was actually the same as 2015, it was maybe one student on. We have, we have more than 100 more students than we had since I started here, students with disabilities. And it's not just that we have an increase in number of students with disabilities. We're also seeing an increase in the complexity of the needs of students coming in. So it's not, so we think it's for a few different reasons. One is we're seeing a lot of young children that are coming in who didn't have adequate early intervention services, either because their parent decided not to give them in preschool because of COVID, perfectly understandable, right? Or kids coming out of birth to three, a lot of times, that was actually done virtually. And if you don't know what birth to three is, it's obviously services for students from birth to three. And, you know, it's for students with developmental disabilities, autism, more severe disabilities. So speech and language services, PTOT, behavioral analysts, VCPA services. They're oftentimes provided in the home at a very young age, and it really does work. Early, we know that, early intervention works. So what's happening now is, if you can imagine a two-year-old who has autism on Zoom, trying to get speech and language services, you can see probably where we are now. And so I, and the, so the complex, it's not just the number of students, the complexity of what we're dealing with now. We had a very unexpected, rather large group of kindergarten students come in that we weren't even on our radar in special education, either because they moved in or again, parents just chose not to send them to preschool because of COVID. So we really worked this year to try to make adjustments to meet the needs of our students within our given resources. We reallocated one of the teachers from the middle school, it was an FTE from the middle school, to add a special ed teacher to Berry and Rockwell, Berry and circle of friends. Because I think, Dr. Spence, we had 13 students that were coming in throughout the year because we had to serve them when they turned three, per their birthday. Over the course of the year, we knew, given the complexities that were happening in the classroom, we had to add sections. So we, we actually did that this year. We also, we had to reallocate another FTE to create a secondary supervisor position because with the increased needs, if those of you don't know, special education is very litigious and it's a very legal process. And so if you don't have good supervision of programs, then oftentimes you can run difficulties. So we added a supervisor of special ed, it was a transfer from one route to the other. We also had to add a special ed teacher to our middle school, and that was done through the SFR funds, Brian. And that was specifically to address some reading needs of our students coming out of COVID. So we added that this year. And then we also, mid-year, just because we had such needs, we actually moved a whole program from Berry School to Rockwell School so that we could meet our students' needs internally without increasing outplacement costs. So, and then lastly, we actually had to add five more paraeducators this year. And that was to meet the, most of those are one-on-one or two-on-one positions for students that we didn't anticipate that moved into the system. Now, we are able to, we were, we're able to use our RCRF funds to pay them, which is a grant, it's a special ed grant, to support those additional paraeducators and make it work this year. So even this year, we had a lot of internal movement and additions to, so that we can support our kids with disabilities. And lastly, we, we were able to increase and add an extra Board, PCCOM VCPAs for certified behavior analysts. And we, that was actually a transfer align from contracted services. But we think by having three people internally that we can better meet the needs of our students. The bottom line with all of this is that we're trying very hard, because we have an amazing staff, to meet our, our children with disabilities' needs in district. Because if we don't meet their needs in district, we have to outplace them. And that's substantially more expensive. There's a couple of reasons, it's not just financial, we do it because we think we can provide a better quality of education for our students, but, but it also has a financial impact. I would estimate the program at Rockwell School, just that one program, probably saves the town about 1 million of dollars. Just that one program. So going into next year, so, we have more, we, we do have in this operating budget, and this is the only increase in headcount in the budget, an additional special ed teacher at Rockwell School. We had to increase our funding for out-of-district placements because we had to increase the number of students that we had to place this year. So we, it typically was around 17, actually ironically, for years, it was always 17. But this year, we're up to 20. So we're up three students. And to give you a sense of what the cost of that is, just for tuition, it doesn't include transportation. The range that we're currently paying for out-of-district tuitions is anywhere from 60,000 to 220,000 per child. And then you add the, the transportation costs onto that. So again, it's, it's expensive when you provide, you have to provide those services. And I think you probably all know too, it's a very legal process. So it's, it is absolutely mandated, so we don't have any choice about it. And, and we believe that we need to meet the needs of our children. So I want to say that wholeheartedly, that's our primary goal. And, you know, we'll have a slide later about this. The state access cost grant is once again capped, so that the reimbursement that we're supposed to receive from the state for tuition and transportation and our needs has been capped again. And I already talked about the behavior analyst. So we're supposed to get funding at 100%, and so being capped means it's less than what we should get. Yeah. I'm going to do one more enrollment thing, and I'll, I'll pause for questions. Our L population actually is down a little bit, but it's starting to creep back up. And the, the issue with our, our current Ls is not necessarily the number of students, but the, because students are coming into the country as newcomers, oftentimes in their home countries, they, they either didn't get an education because they didn't have Zoom in Ecuador, or they didn't have options for, or schools were closed for long periods of time. So they're coming in, we've always dealt with language acquisition and transition to the school system, but now, coming from their home countries, they haven't, we have, we're seeing much more. but now coming from their home countries, they haven't, we have, we're seeing much more. Just term again. Unfinished learning. There, so, and we have been able to provide extra support for that. We are looking at actually reallocating some positions to bring in an additional, this, this is not necessarily reflected in the budget, but we want to let you know that we try to reallocate whenever we can. And we are looking at adding another certified teacher, but also eliminating some tutor positions to do that. So it's really a swap, and you won't see any difference in the F T Es right there.
Yes, I'd just like to restate that again, Dr. Parker, it's okay. So when Dr. Parker talks about reallocation, the needs change for students, the situation changes, the number of students changes. And we step back and we look at, can we approach it differently? And we talk to the special education leadership, and we try to see if we can change our organization to better meet students. So all of those different things that Dr. Parker talked about were reallocations of funds in different ways. So the type of staffing changed, but it was to meet the direct needs of the children without adding more staff. But changing our approach, and so therefore changing, because we're people. So we, we end up changing the type of person that should be in a certain situation. And that move from one school to another of a program, they didn't just take the program and move it. They combined, they redistributed students differently, which let them not have to add another headcount to their school. So by shuffling it differently, but making sure the right teachers were assigned to the right little groups, they were able to make it work for the remainder of this year.
It's kind of time to pause, because we're going to move on to a different topic. Any questions about special ed or enrollment?
Yeah, if I could just, well, how many weeks, and I appreciate being back in school so early for Bethel, how many weeks were the kids on Zoom?
A hundred percent of the time.
Oh, for the whole, the whole.
So definitely in March of twenty twenty through the end of school year, March of twenty twenty.
Just how many weeks were there?
I don't know, eight?
What do you want, from March?
About ten weeks, right?
More than March.
More, they're going to count, all right, so March.
Twenty twenty.
About ten weeks. Yeah, ten weeks. Then we had a, we had a little bit of a pause in, I think we started out hybrid with our elementary and middle, but it was only for like two weeks. And then elementary and middle were almost full-time. I think middle was a little bit delayed into October. Yeah, yeah. And then the high school was hybrid for a long time. The high school was hybrid through March of last year, but elementary was pretty much in the whole time. The only time that we were out is after Christmas, the holiday, the winter holiday, and I think the week after Thanksgiving. Right, because it was, there was a big spike in cases at that time. So.
Dr. So all this damage happened in ten weeks.
For some, yes.
It was fourteen weeks.
Thank you, fourteen.
And there were, there were all, I would also say that families had the option all last year to stay home, to stay home.
Right.
So there were children at our elementary schools, lower elementary, Johnson School, middle and high school. Even though we may have been in, students were still home all year. Teachers had to provide remote learning option for our students.
Right, so, and at, at the best, I think it was like fifteen percent that were still out, at least K eight. And, but Nick, it's, it's less than thirty two weeks. Right, and it's, it's not just the, it wasn't just the remote, I want to be really clear about that. It was, it was when we had them, even in class, we could not teach them the way we taught them. And so it was that combination of those things. I hope our recovery is better, you know, as we look forward because we are here for. But, but to your point, we were here more, definitely worse than most districts.
And just think of the impact on word mass to teaching a small child language.
Right, right.
And then you can't, you know, all that, and then really get affected.
Dr. Parker, you had mentioned that the pre-post-COVID breakout of students at level math was fifty four to forty four.
Correct.
And that there were two math interventionists. Were those two math interventionists involved at still at forty three?
No, this was, this was before we implemented it this year. So this is our fall data, which is from September of twenty twenty one. So we're going to readminister that, that assessment, our, my department started, no.
March.
So we'll have a good look at that point, see what the difference is. But we did target the math interventionist in the schools that needed it the most and where the data was most significant. So they were targeted for Johnson and the middle school.
So the whole base.
The whole base, that, right, 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 right. And we've been providing training to our amazing staff all year on something called an acceleration model to really try to accelerate, because we're, we're not talking about kids that, for the most part, that have a fundamental disability or severe issues. It's just the lack of instruction in the manner that we were able to provide previously that is, I think, what's causing some of this. So, yeah.
And we have a bus contract that we are working on, it's not fine line at this point. We've got a couple of bids, a team of people, we're, we're three people, a board member, and a couple of people from the administrative team, Terry and some of the accounting. Are looking at the bids value, and the student staff are the same. And those bids go to review by our resource management business separations committee, which is not with the recommendation, the school board needs to approve that before we go to contract. So the budget does reflect an adjustment for budget purposes. Go to the budget, to the end of the bus contract.
The only thing I would add is, we had to add last year to the budget an additional bus into the fleet because we didn't have enough buses to transport students. And then we also added, we had to add an additional special ed grant this year, yes. So, so part of it, the increase in enrollment, is also impacting transportation. I will say though, we're not, I think you all are aware, there was a bus driver shortage this year.
Yeah, we're all aware.
And we weren't able to actually find enough bus drivers to run the extra bus this year. But I am confident, talking to the bus company, that they have a plan to try to get the drivers up so that we can run all of the fleet next year. So.
The next couple of slides are some historic information on prior board debt budgets and the cuts that were made and what, what line names were impacted by those cuts. This is really just for informational purposes, that in our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, it was two hundred and fifteen thousand. The reductions taken twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, it was three hundred eighty-five thousand one eight seven. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, four hundred thousand. And the maintenance account, which is our four sixty account, was reduced by fifty thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty in the state at that level. And so last year's budget, towards unexpendable funds account, was applied to reduce that, was applied, I guess a hundred thousand dollars toward that four sixty account. We then, I guess, accounts at three fifty then for that. So this is really just some historic information, the total of those three years of cuts in the world were nearly a dollar. And I guess the point is that if you keep cutting, 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 there's no place else to cut. So I just thought that would be helpful information.
And if I can add, I mean, it was significant, we had to cut all our remedial summer school programs. We couldn't offer remedial programs for students. All of our supply lines got stripped. You know, we made conscious decisions not to affect our staff. And it doesn't directly affect their staff because, because of the materials that they need to work in their classrooms. But we're at a point where there's nowhere else to go in the non-payroll accounts. And, and so I say that to get back to Melanie's point about helping at a crossroads, being at a.
Breaking point.
Breaking point. And the, the, in the impact over time has been significant. And so, but just to, just to provide a little bit of background and context, you know, when we start talking about reductions like this year moving forward, well, there's difference between what's called mandated programs and not mandated programs, things that we have to provide by law, and those things that I guess we would consider extra or things that our students love that makes school system special, right? And so you can see here, mandated programs that we currently have, like our core curricular programs, your teacher in the classroom, teaching those, the, you know, the core academic subjects. We have legislative requirements, graduation requirements for, for graduation, that we have to provide those courses to be able to make sure our students have those to the ability to graduate with a high school diploma. And I'm going to have Terry pass out, because it's related to this. Over the past, I would say, ten years, I'm going to give you a stack of legislation that was passed at the state level that, actually Cynthia got me on that one, thinking about, most of which have a financial impact, even if it's just like the time and resources of people. And it's not that I disagree with a lot of the legislation, that's not the point at all. The last Excel spreadsheet, it was actually an analysis that was done by our attorneys of unfunded mandates that goes back ten years. And so it is significant when, when you're, when you're, when you're being not only a responsible for the core programs of our students, but also having to do a lot of other stuff that, quite frankly, was never in the education wheelhouse years ago. But we have to provide special ed services, we have to provide what's called five oh four services, for students that have, that need accommodations in their schools. They have to provide intervention services, because if we don't provide intervention services, we can't make a referral to special education. So we have to prove, we have to prove that we've provided those services, and it's implicit, it's the right thing to do. But we have to provide those services not only in academics, but also in social emotional support. A lot of people don't understand that, that we're not only responsible for literacy and mathematics, but also making sure that we have interventions on the social emotional side. We have to provide services for our English language services. And then we also have other programs that we have that also meet contractual needs. So for example, at the elementary level, we contractually obligated to provide a prep for our teachers every day for a certain amount of period of time. If we didn't have our specials, we couldn't provide that for them. And so it's not only that they're, that they're wonderful programs for our students, that also meets that, that need for providing that contractual obligation. So that's just one example. But, you know, you always ask me, so I thought I'd get ahead of the game. Would you cut if, 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 if you, if we did get a reduction? And I'm going to tell you, the only where, only place we can go at this point is programs and people. And, you know, so when we start to look at that, and I'm not telling you that any one of these programs necessarily would be cut, but this is the conversations we would be having. So if we think about our non-mandated extracurricular programs, you're talking about things like athletics, things that make our school system special for our students. You know, our, our outstanding music program for which we win national awards. Our color guard just won awards over the weekend, or winter guard, sorry, or winter guard over the weekend. But these are extracurricular services, we don't have to provide our students. But it is, it is, I think, the heart of our system, and it's what not only our students need and want, but what our families need and want. You could look at curriculum programs, right, and put increased class size. You could look at maybe a preschool half-day, you're going to have a long-term impact of that because you won't have the right intervention services at an early age by doing that, but you could do that. We could look at eliminating summer school altogether and not offering that, that program or services to our students. And J R T, see, our virtual high school program, we have pathway programs and manufacturing and healthcare internships. These are the kinds of things we have to look at at this point because we can't go anymore with just cutting supplies and technology. So I just want to throw it out there, that's where we are now, where we weren't even a couple of years ago. I don't know if you either, if you want to add anything.
Well, you know, whenever we go through a process of looking at reduction, we do look at, and anything we can do more efficiently. And we always, and we've always advised the board of finance when we are told by the state that the current one was a little bit less, and so we take those reductions and we advise you that we're taking those reductions. But we have cut a lot of the, and, and I think we're, I think we're there. I mean, this is my sixteenth year here in Bethel, and this year I'm concerned because the needs are great.
Just here, number of kids.
We have, thank goodness, we have a better staff, that's right, and it works so far. And we need every last one of them.
We do. So this is just some information that I learned recently, that we're actually reaching a hundred and forty-two out of one sixty-nine thirty-six students in the state of Connecticut.
Yes, I'm sorry, just wanted to ask a question about the mandate. Absolutely. There are a lot of mandates, right, and some of them, you know, don't require funding in the real sense of the word. And I was curious, are there any, are these mandates applied to all school districts in Connecticut? They're not tailored for each school, are they?
Some, some are, to be fair. So there are some that are specifically for alliance districts, or, I mean, Dan probably can speak better than I can.
I'll tell you the reason I'm asking.
Right.
Is because like, for example, like if you're, if the state mandates you to provide in-school suspension for a kid, and you would have to have someone, obviously, a staff person with that kid. So, and that's because, I guess, so the, I mean, that would make more sense at Bridgeport because they don't want to send the person home, like in a city. But in Bethel, like is it, are there any? Here we are.
Yeah.
That it's just not the same environment that, I mean, maybe I can, you know something, I don't know. This, Dr. Fritz is looking at me.
Well, I, I.
Tell me.
I think that, I think that many of the laws, and I think that is a frustration, and, I mean, Dan can speak to, I think he agrees with me. I think you agree with the author, that sometimes there's a problem in one community, and they make a law that covers everybody and applies to everybody, am I wrong? Yeah, and we, we totally, I totally agree about that.
But are there any that?
There are.
That, that you could, like, I mean, you know, contact, like, Plankton would say, look, this doesn't apply to us, are there, just curious?
No, I do all the time. I, I meet with legislators on a regular basis, I've on a cap sixty second board. I, you know, I, I'm constantly in the loop where I can give feedback on the impact of things. And unfortunately, you know, I, you probably speak much better, what actually happens when they get there. But it doesn't necessarily always make an impact, is that really?
I, I will say, I mean, I was there, we were close on.
Very close.
And the truth is, very, very, very difficult to get a carve-out that would affect, you know, like, many things are very cookie cutter, you put them in, it's a great idea, and then when you fight the battle to try to, you know, get carved out where it makes sense, it just never works. It takes a couple of years, you try to fix it.
My God, this is the first time that I've seen all these.
Together, right, right.
I know.
And it's overwhelming, really.
And I think most of it comes from a good place.
It does.
In that specific situation, but there are a lot of unintended consequences.
Right, right.
For the schools that don't have that particular situation.
Or don't have the resources to support it.
Right.
You know, I'll, I'll give you a really good example, I think it was, I think it is a good piece of legislation, the dyslexia legislation. It a hundred percent was necessary, but the, the impact of the training assessments, the P E, the little trainings, P E, we had, we had to actually develop programs for kids as a result of that. In the end, it was the right thing to do, I have to say that, in that particular piece of legislation. But, but there was a lot of unintended costs that we're still, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we have the middle school additional teacher for reading. So, so it's very rare that it's just for one community or two, it tends to get applied to everybody.
And I just would like to say one more thing on the non-mandated curricular programs slide, and the list of, of things that are not mandated, but honestly are the quality of life things for our kids. I think that a number of the things that are listed there at the high school, virtual high school, pathstone, pathway, internship, those things, when we get the due for accreditation, they're looking at things like that, early teen initiative, rest of health kids, to give innovative shows. So we have to be careful that we don't take away the things that make that school really special. Because we're really at that point, but we fought long and hard to get to the point where we can operate these things because there have been other times in our history when they have been some big cuts, and it takes a long time to walk your way back. So I just would hate to see any unintended.
So I just would hate to see any unintended consequences from some major reaction to that as a, as a answer.
So I already said this, that we're currently ranked 142 out of 169 in what we spend on students. A hundred and, 142 out of 169. And this is, this is actually a regional book at, so the state has to list for per people expenditure to provide a comparative analysis across cities and towns across the state of Connecticut. To determine what we pay, what we, what we pay. So it includes not only the operating budget that you guys approved, but it includes grant funding. Any, and any in-kind services that are provided from the town. And I do want to say out loud that there's a lot of things in the town budget that support the schools, right? The SROs, the maintenance funds, the utility funds. We, we are not separated entirely, right? It does not include debt service. So the calculation doesn't include any, any services incurred by the Rockwell and Johnson projects. But you'll know, and this is, this is the regional spending because we live in Fairfield County. But if I put up the juror spending, which is the district reference group spending, it's about the same. And, and the issue is, you know, we spend about $15,968 a child. The state average is 17. And, you know, I often get asked questions from parents, well, Newtown does this. Or Brookfield does this. Brookfield's a little closer to us. That's, that's a harder comparison. But my response is, well, Newtown spends $4,000 a child more than we do. And so sometimes we can't offer some of the stuff that the state programs because of that. And, you know, this slide is really meant to say, so this looks compared as we, from year to year, both in our juror, again, which is our district reference group, and our, and our region. Because we live in Fairfield County, our teachers could go, and I hope they're not listening, for those that are there, they could go to Brookfield and make $10,000 a year more. Our teachers and staff are always asked to do more with less, especially in the last couple of years. Because of the sheer number of students we have. And what this says is we got increases, but the increases did not outpace the enrollment. So it really was a net zero for that. And even beyond, beyond that, we were still struggling to kind of meet the needs. And, you know, we're often compared to, you know, people want to talk about salaries within our bargaining units and increases that have happened. But if you look at the current February Bureau of Labor Statistics data, the average wage increase in Connecticut, not Connecticut, nationally, was 5.7%. Even the cost of living adjustment for the elderly for social security was 5.9% this year. So comparatively, you know, you could see that, that it's, it's not the same. Our teachers and staff, our parent educators, our custodians, our IT staff, everyone in our system has never worked harder than they have in the past two years. The toll it's taken on that is significant. You're not only dealing with students with more complex needs. They had to work in a learning environment. They're quite grateful. It was a little bit crazy last year. And, and they continue to do it with a smile on their face and welcome children into their classroom every day. And that's amazing and it's to their credit. But that we're at a point, as Melanie said, where we're at a breaking point. So. This is the again. So how did we spend our grants? So a couple of things about the grants. On our financial dashboard, as I said, and this, when we put this online, the financial dashboard is actually linked to this document. And I hope you find that dashboard useful. It has a lot of information, not only about all matters financial in the system, but it also, it also gives a very detailed analysis of how we spend our grant money. This graph actually, or this graphic actually represents all of the different grants that we received from the beginning of the pandemic to now. The two that are, are gone or going this year is the Corona relief, Corona relief fund.
Corona virus relief fund.
And CARES ends this year. Corona virus relief fund already ended, but CARES is ending this year. So it's the ESAR/ARC grants, either special and or regular ed that we've been using. The State Department of Ed has very specific criteria. We actually have to apply for the grants for very specific purposes. And what we've listed here, the first, I think, five bullets is applies to our ESAR or ARC/ESAR grants. And they have to address certain things. They have to address learning, learning loss or acceleration, family connections, social emotional supports, technology, building and safe and healthy schools. And then a special ed grants that are, that were provided, you know, provide that extra parent educator support that I said that we needed. And we had to do a lot of evaluations for kids with disabilities coming back to the school systems that were above and beyond our normal costs and expectations. We had to provide additional extended school year services because of the gap in learning over a period of time. So those were all things that we used the money for. I already said that, like, we probably would have, our request would have been higher if we didn't have that. And, you know, it's not really meant to, it's not meant to plan the operating budget because they have to be approved by the State Department. And, but we've really tried to be strategic about how we use the funds. And I know I've said this before, we, we wanted to purposely not put it all into salaries because we knew that there was an expiration point at the end of that, that we weren't maybe necessarily going to be able to fund long-term. So what we did use a lot of it on is things that would have come to the local budget had not we had this grant. So for example, we had to replace all of our staff laptops because it was in that cycle. And we, we got this grant and we're able to do that. So there's no impact locally on the budget because we had this. We were able to replace all of our, or not all of them, most of our boards. Yeah, Nova boards that were, were running out of service. We were able to, we're, we're looking at doing some significant work at the high school and the HVAC system. So again, those are things that we've been in our capital plan, but we use the grants so that we can hopefully, you know, not have that cost go to, or go to the town. I'm going to pause.
And now create a clip.
And now create a physical clip, correct. Questions? We're almost done.
The money out of the COVID money, that's what I call it, because there's a bunch of letters.
Yeah.
You committed a million dollars to fix the HVAC.
Yeah, it's a little over a million.
One million eighty thousand.
And you put 400 in, right, to town as a capital?
I, I think it's in the planning stage still, but, yes, those, those have been discussed.
Right. We were able to fix, we're fixing this spring, the HVAC unit, the air conditioning on top of the middle school and the gym, which has been broken.
And that was another, that wasn't part of this AC part of it, right?
No, no, that's another thing in there. Dock cleaning we did to improve the ventilation system. So we did a lot of work on the ventilation systems over the past couple of years. What else are you thinking?
Well, those were the, the like building things.
Yes.
But it's the laptops, it's.
Chromebook, Chromebooks, things like that.
The Nova boards. And it was, it was some money that went towards special education, some summer transportation for more opportunities.
Right.
We did have a service in for part of the year to supplement the custodians, to make sure we were doing extra cleaning. And, and then we have all the, the staffing. So in the, in the ESAR 2, which you'll see if you, when we pull it up on the dashboard, but we talked about the tutors. There's a math specialist for two years. And then we have.
Curriculum-wise.
We have needed additional substitute coverage, yes. One, because COVID's out there and people are out more, yeah. And, and.
We just, you need more teachers around, so you just have to have more.
Yeah, as more substitute. So we did use some of the grant for that.
Right.
And, and you can see that some of the choices we made were also meant to, some may need to continue, but a lot of them may be done if we were able to do a lot of the acceleration of the learning. Some of those needs would dissipate out. You know, when everyone is beyond COVID and in a much healthier state, you won't move those substitutes. So we, we did give a lot of thought to being careful about creating a physical clip.
And just one more thing about the teachers, peers, the.
That last one, right.
What was the value of that? If you replaced all that one?
It was. That was only, we didn't do them all.
And it's over, it's over two periods.
We're doing, we're doing a cycle, so it's about 90,000.
No, that's, that's, that's one piece of it.
There's, there's, there's.
Is there really a piece here? It's all written out on the thing.
Yes, you'll see it right by the.
Yeah, but I liked the presentation.
But I, I'll have Kristen, I'll have Kristen look it up while we're sitting here.
So is it fair a hundred and fifty thousand?
Oh, more. Donna, how much?
I'm just looking at.
Yeah, the, the.
You've got a heck of a staff here. I gotta say. A lot of my employees.
We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of parents here.
It's 90, it's 190,000 dollars.
One night.
Another expenditure of 320,000.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Over course of two years, I might break it up if we don't have the total replacement and whatnot.
Great. So this, this, this just provides an overview of where the revenue is coming from the state. I laugh because I was so excited when the, the governor announced they were putting more into ECS and looking specifically at increased enrollment. And I think Bethel got $8,000 more in the governor's proposed enrolled, adjustment to ECS. But we have been flat as long as I've been here. But we haven't gotten to, remember that's revenue that goes to the town. But our excess costs, and I actually recently wrote our delegation, I think I included Cynthia on that email and that. But I tried to get them to, because of the surplus, to either look at, why don't you for once fund the excess cost cap grant for, for special ed, meet that need, or at least make adjustments in enrollment. Apparently they did enrollment, but we only got $8,000 more. So, okay, so now for the Board of Education, the 2020, 2023. I just want to say that I find it really disheartening when people say to me, what's the increase? Oh, that's a number. What's the increase? Every district has a story. And they're not the same. Our kids are not the same. Their needs are not the same. Where we started from last year's budget is not the same. So to ask for a number is frankly irresponsible. Ask me what's behind the number. I'm happy to have that confirmed. Because if you don't have any perspective, then get out of here. You know, we're serious. The business is serious. The business of educating is serious. And it's really important to this town that you have a good education system. And I think you all know that. Let's ask what the school district wants. If, if not for your kids and for yourself, right? So let's be real here. What's important is the kids. As I was talking to Dr. Salerno today, I'm starting to do rounds and check in with all the kids, see how they're doing. And she said, I said, what do you do each day? The kids, the kids, the kids. If the commitment that we have, the time they put in, is really pretty unbelievable with the time the schools, you cannot believe it. They're multitasking. There's so many needs that these kids have and it's staggering. The classrooms, there's 25 kids in them. And I was walking through that building and they are doing these and things and they love being here. They like the culture. They wanted to support me. They don't ask for a lot. Honest to God. But don't ask me about a number. I mean, it, it really honestly, it, it's just unfair. And it's honestly, it's pretty, it's a quote, it's a fortez. And it just shows a complete lack of understanding for care of what's going on here, what we're doing for our kids. But I'm going to need a number. I am going to need a number. Do they find enough to sit through all this? Yes, when they?
Melanie, I could speak on that. We do numbers. You guys do a great job with your kids. We're interested in the numbers.
But we have to understand what, why the number is the number.
Oh, I understand. I've been to workshops. There's a lot of.
And I appreciate that. And I'm not saying anybody else out, but I just, in the community, when people come up to me and say, oh, the number, the increase or whatever, I said, do you have an idea what we're doing? Do you have an idea, you know, what we're doing? And, and I also want to say that there's this sense that the Board of Education spends money like your own sailors. Nothing could be, this is probably penny picture right here. I mean, seriously, that we always ask, ask our board, you know, how many kids are benefiting by this? Is there any other way to do this? Is this the best we can do for our kids and the taxpayers? And I will tell you, I'm pretty tough in union negotiations. I sit on a lot of the negotiating things because I'm looking at what other districts are paying and there's a spirit of the taxpayers and what can we get through the Board of Finance. So we are all very careful. I, I, and so I just have to say that, that sometimes I get the sense that, oh, they don't have to value money, they don't know what. I, I do, we do, but certainly a sense of we, you know, we're control people. This population, the nature of the population, the kids. It, we can't control them, but once they come to Bethel, there are responsibility. That's what it is. That's what it is. It's like a child of yours. You're going to do what you have to do. And that's what we do. So having said that, our operating budget on 51,224,081. The increase amount is 2,174,743. The percentage increase is 4.43. I will tell you that that is a bit of an increase over the super interest budget because we did get worried that our health insurance increase was going to be higher than we had been, had been forecasted us. So we felt because of this contractual obligation we needed to put in our budget. And the other was the bus contract, but like it was going to come in higher than had been budgeted. And that was a reason, things brought it to the forefront. Yeah, this just provides a breakdown of how, of how that breaks out. You'll note that most of it is just salaries and benefits, which is contractual, right? We really don't have any play in that area. And transportation is a little bit of an increase, as Melanie just explained. And special education tuition, you're going to see an increase there. And I think I explained the reasons why that. But if you look at everything else, you're talking about 0.14 percent. So.
Four point four three.
Yeah, yeah. Point one four, right? It's a very, very small amount. And hence why for the reductions, they're going to have a lot bigger impact this year. And, and then the last thing we'll just talk about quickly, although I know we'll spend more time later probably talking and answering questions about it. We did propose to bring our 460 account back up to the level that it was in previous years. Even though we do have two schools and they are beautiful. The existing schools continue to plague us with needs. So you'll see an overview of the contracted services. We're going to see some increases in some of the services that we had, just for a few reasons. One is that, especially with Johnson and Rockwell, that this, that I know we had to increase our HVAC contractors. This is just one example, but the equipment and the sophistication of the equipment is pretty significant. And so we wanted to make sure that we are maintaining those beautiful facilities. And then really the smallest part is, you know, projects that we want to do this year to, you know, keep our schools looking good. So I think that's it for our presentation, but we're happy to answer any additional questions. And I have confidence in my vision, which I will hand out. Then have it for yourself.
Good question. Are, are you, you're like the custodians, I noticed their salaries are about 200. Are they without a contract right now?
They're, they are negotiating. Right.
Do you guys have a wage difference?
We do.
Where is that one?
It's in the, it's in the line that says, we tend to save the salaries.
And we're, we're in negotiations with custodians plus.
There's, there's.
Custodians and. So you, you, you won't see an increase in that, but there, but there is money budgeted for that.
ESAR, ESAR. Not for nothing, but the longer I do this, the more I realize that my angst is not directed at you at all. It's on the way up. Because I feel more and more every year that it's, you know, our town that has took over all the, 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 you know, the messiness up there and, and just the mandates and it's in its regulations. Or the litigious nature of special ed. And all these things that, you know, take you away from actually what your vision is. So I think this is the best team of educators that I've seen, and I've been around for a while. And it's just the, the difficult thing is that how do you address that going up? I mean, you have a paid lab, you're such a true that person is busy. It just seems like it's getting more and more difficult to break through to the. It just seems like it's getting more and more difficult to break through to the state legislators. Am I wrong?
Right. I think, I think that it really is a team effort. I, I, I do really try. I can't, you know, I, I, you know, I try. To work and, and with our delegation and then at the state level in my, my different roles at the state level. You know, honestly, I think that'd be good if they heard from other people besides me.
Well, I say that too. And I've been hearing both about a lot of things, but I noticed that, that, you know, it really would have to be a lot of people in the town to actually address this with the state, whether it's a letter or an email, because they do pay attention. But I, you know, I, you know, I've been an activist for quite a while. I noticed there's a lack of, everyone wants to talk about it, but I rarely see, you know, the effort to. And I just say that to all of you, just hammer out an email because we can't go on like this. I really don't believe we can. Even if we just said, yeah, budget, great, love you. Next year it was going to be a whole new, you know, nest of whatever. So I'm just saying that I think that, I think you do a great job. I just get, there are schools in the country that haven't even reopened yet.
Right.
So, you know, bravo to you. But it's, it's very difficult. It puts us in a very difficult situation with the, the growth of the town. Like growth can have two meanings, you know? There's growth and like a tour can be a growth, you know? So Chief Obama actually said that there'd be increase in crime and calls because we have so many multi-unit dwellings. So there's all this different stuff that's factoring in that it just makes me worried that if we don't somehow try to get some kind of something from the state, that it's going to get worse. And, and I, again, I have a lot of, you know, respect for you guys.
And I just would implore you, because I, I know, I, we've worked together for eight years. I think a lot of you. Let the public have their say. Don't, don't go into reductions until, until parents can have an opportunity to speak to the budget. It's a lot different than in your past. And, and, you know, I, I always try to work and be a, I think we always try to work and be a team. And I hope you view that that way. But we are in a much different place than we are working for. So I just implore you on that. And I also want to do one other thing to take a point of view. This is Terry's last budget.
I knew you were going to start crying.
She almost did start crying. I did. So I just want to recognize.
This is a great town. This is just a wonderful town.
I just want to recognize her hard work also. You know, I just, I know we'll probably like honor her nine thousand times between now and then. But she's not only a really good friend to me, but she is, she, I, she is probably one of the only business officials I have ever worked with that cares deeply about our children and does everything she can with the budget process to make sure that our students and our staff get what they need. And so that's pretty rare. So I just want to.
Thank you, Terry.
That's one really.
Yes, that's one.
No, it's the year we're in, the year we're in now, Brian, that the board of finance instructed us to take a hundred thousand of our four sixty and allocate from our one percent account. So I don't, I won't know till the end of the year that any of those small projects that we're doing at the schools. I'm still tracking them and then.
We will need to have a transfer over to cover it from probably the unextended funds account. And the other thing I wanted to share about the unextended funds account, I noticed that Nick heard this when they were in the workshop. But we also applied for two security grants from.
DMS.
Yes. No, yeah, DMS. Yes. And we actually got one of them, which is great because again, that, that was part of a capital project. We asked the board for, board of finance for a few years ago. So we got one of the grants, but it's a matching grant. So we're going to take the remaining match out of the one percent unextended funds account. And then we think we actually might get the second grant. So that will, that will really propel us a long way to, I think I've shared with you many times that we wanted to make sure that the security that we have at Rockwell and Johnson is extended to all the other schools. And so we've been really chipping away at it and we think these grants will take us a long way. That's all to say that between the hundred thousand dollars and the matches of the grants, we expect that unextended funds balance to go down.
Yeah, it'll go down significantly. And, and it is, you know, the, the back to the emergencies and opportunities. And, and a, a typical emergency that happens in a district is, you know, you have some unexpected outplacement and all of a sudden you're. Outplacement and all of a sudden you're down three hundred thousand. I mean, you've read it. I've read the newspaper for some years in Brookfield and, you know, Monroe. You know, you read, you pick it up, it's always the, the same types of things happen. And so it was, it was important when we all established it out together. And I, I would just like to make sure we don't take that too low.
And I, I do, I'm really proud of getting the grant, at least one. I hope to be a second. I think it, again, it'll defer things that could have launched the local taxpayer.
And what was that dollar amount of, of two grants?
It's in the question and answer. Oh, look it up. It's in the, yeah. I think Nick, my gut is like around three hundred thousand dollars.
Sounds like two fifty that they asked for.
Right. Well, it was six hundred thousand that we asked initially. I do know that. But the grant amounts for both projects and the state reverses that to a fifty-four percent. So we only have to incur forty-five, forty-six percent of cost. Yeah, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that amount. You, you can't ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm happy later to answer any questions you have. Thank you. Thank you. Well, Barry did more, Zappi.
Yeah, they did.
Hey, guys, guys, importantly, if you are sitting in a chair, could you give us one second so we can end the meeting? We're in the meeting.